I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Good evening. This is the Clinton Public Schools School Committee meeting. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Section 20. Can we have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from July the 27th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous as well, thank you. Dr. Meyer.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Dr. Meyer. My mistake. Comments, questions, and requests. Do we have any comments? Thank you. Dr. Meyer.
Okay. So first, we'll start with a maternity leave. Marissa Sarafa, a grade eight science teacher, is requesting maternity leave. That'll begin on Monday, January 4th, and requesting to approximately March 29th. Fortunately, we have a few maternity leaves at the middle school that we're probably going to be able to time up on some sharing of some long-term subs. So we wish her her well. I don't consider, I think we established we don't necessarily need to approve that leave because it is a protected leave. I do have another leave request. This one, we do need to approve. This is a request from Valerie Andre, grade four. She has formally requesting a leave of absence for the 2021 school year. The reason for her request is so that she's able to care for her child because her current childcare is unavailable to do so this year. At this time, she intends to return for the 2122 school year and looks forward to doing so. So it is in the contract that we can approve a one-year leave of absence. It is an unpaid leave of absence, but it would be, it doesn't need school committee approval. And I'm okay with it. I think this is, I think in spirit of what's going on, we'd like to try to accommodate people's requests of this nature.
Would someone like to make a motion to the effect of approving the requested leave?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous, thank you.
We also have a retirement. Joanne Broadmerkel has written that she'll be retiring as October 3rd. It's been a pleasure to work at CES for 22 years. She's enjoyed teaching children, especially loves to teach reading. And we've worked with Joanne and talked to her about this decision. So we wish her well and we'll make sure that we invite her to the retiree celebration, which we'll talk about a little bit later in the meeting. Okay. So that was just some initial housekeeping. The next thing is to go to the presentation we have tonight on the reopening update. So at this time, we got to do a little bit of shifting around here. So I'd invite the school committee to head down and I'll turn the projector on.
We should probably turn our microphones off so there's no feedback.
Yeah, I just did. Okay. This is the Clinton Public Schools reopening presentation for August 10th, 2020. Just trying to see if the live stream catches up here. Okay. It'd be good if it would go here. Okay. So tonight, we're going to, the outline of the presentation for tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the DESE, which is Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Guidance and Expectations again. Talk a little bit about the Clinton, local Clinton data and some of the things that are soft opening with summer school. And then we will talk a little bit about implications for the school calendar. And we'll review a little bit about our proposed reopening model, which at this point is a hybrid model. And then we'll talk a little about the remote learning option for students who are not yet ready to return. And then we'll talk about a student registration process so we can help make our plans. So I'm going to try to do this. Share this tab instead. Hopefully, this comes out here.
We look at how things are going related to COVID-19 in the state of Massachusetts. We actually have a lot to be optimistic about.
We've done a phenomenal job of getting our rates of transmission down. We are viewed around the country as a leader in developing strategies to reduce this spread infection. Getting our kids back to school is really only safe because we've gotten the rates of transmission down to a low level, low and continuing to drop. If we were in another state, we'd be having a different conversation. There will be important measures that are going to be implemented by each individual school to make sure that kids stay safe, kids and teachers. One of them will be social distancing. We're going to keep kids apart. We're going to rely heavily on the use of masks, which we know are highly effective at reducing transmission. We're going to rely on hand hygiene. We're going to really require children to be washing their hands or using hand sanitizer frequently over the course of the school day. So one of the most important things that parents and families can do to support safe return to school is ensure that they're only sending their children to school when they arrive. Every day, we want parents to ensure that their children don't have any symptoms that could be a sign of COVID. We know that classrooms are a little different than they did last year. They're going to be looking at a way that's going to maximize the safety of both students and the teachers. The first difference that would be noticed is that the desks are going to be spaced further apart. We know that not every classroom will be able to achieve six feet of distancing. And that's safe, provided that children who are in those classes, as well as the teachers, are wearing their masks. In addition, they're all going to be facing forward because we know that sideways transmission is rare. And with those strategies in place, distances shorter than six feet can still be done safely.
So because of what we learned about the virus itself, we feel comfortable that the plans that have been outlined are a safe and effective way for our children to return to school this fall.
I'm an infectious disease physician and also am. And there is nothing more important to me than the safety of our students. I really believe we're putting together strategies that protect the kids and the educators in the classroom to make it safe for them to go back to school. My children are going to be going back to school in the fall, and I am really confident that they're going to be fine.
Okay. So if that looked familiar to you, that was the same video we played last meeting to start things off. Although I know we had a lot of feedback and it was difficult for people to hear it or really see it on the livestream or the Google Meet, so I wanted to start with that again. Just want to make sure I'm sharing the right tab over here. Yep, okay, it came back. All right. So I think that sort of sets a stage. It talks about the key measures, right? So when we're talking about student safety, we're not talking about one strategy. We're talking about a combination of strategies, including master phase coverings required for students in grades two and older and everyone on the bus. We're still strongly recommending them for K and one. Physical distancing. We are recommending to start in a hybrid model, which should allow us to have six feet in our classrooms. Hand washing and hand sanitizing. We've mentioned last meeting, we've ordered our hand sanitizer. We've ordered additional sinks for hand washing stations. And encouraging parents to stay home when sick. We're not going to have a perfect attendance award this year or anything like that. We want people, if they don't feel well, to stay home and err on the side of caution. So the DESE expectations and guidance, they, and this is same as last time. They asked us to do one reopening plan that addresses three options: full reopening, hybrid, or remote. There was a two-step process for that. July 31st, we had to submit our preliminary reopening plan summary. That was approved at our July 27th meeting, in which we told the state that we were leaning towards a hybrid model. August 10th was when the comprehensive plan document is due. That is today. We had requested an extension till tomorrow to get our school committee meeting in. However, so many school districts had requested extensions to get their school committee meetings in this week. They pushed the date back to August 14th just recently. When we talk about the plan, one of the big things, I mentioned this last time, our comprehensive plan is designed in such a way that it can, you can move seamlessly between any phase of the plan. So these are kind of the four stages here. You can see the green area, return without restrictions. That area is basically what kind of traditional maybe school looked like last year. We don't anticipate that happening this year. Plan one there would be bringing all students back with those safety restrictions in place. Plan two there, the hybrid learning, would be bringing some students in and some students being remote, which is what we are recommending. And then plan three would be going fully remote. Our plan, as I mentioned, is to be able to make sure that when we assign classes, when we create our cohorts, that those cohorts are going to be able to stay the same regardless of which phase we're in. So that it's not difficult for us to maneuver between the two. So if we were to start remote, or excuse me, if we were to start in a hybrid and have to go remote, we could slide right over to full remote. If we were to start in a hybrid and things went well and we wanted to come to full in person, we could slide right into full in person. We don't have to reshuffle everyone around and introduce them to a new teacher and all those types of things. This is just a list of DESE expectations and guidance. I provided this list last time, just to kind of show, you know, we're not infectious disease experts. You heard the infectious disease expert in the video. They are putting together, they're working with the DESE to put together this guidance. Our job is to follow the guidance and to try to adapt it so that it fits the scenarios of Clinton, the specifics for our building, for our town, for our population. So these were all the expectations they had provided by last meeting. This is all the guidance we've received since last meeting. So on the 27th, which we did announce here, but we have just got it in, we did receive that they were reducing the student day requirement from 180 days to 170 to provide 10 additional professional development days. On August 3rd, they came out with a lot for us. They updated their frequently asked questions, some supplemental information around science courses and lab work and what you have to do to, if you have to share a microscope or something, what does that look like? Creating positive learning environments for basically how do we support social emotional learning in whatever model? They also came out the Adult and Community Learning Services one, which is important because we do have the Clinton Adult Learning Center and we are making sure that we follow those guidelines. Remote learning partner information on August 4th was a big one. We had been waiting on that to try to figure out what we were going to use as a content provider. And we were able to make that decision after that came out. And then they gave, on August 6th, they came out some feedback on the preliminary plans that had been given out, submitted on the 31st. It was general statewide feedback, just kind of different areas that people may or may not have addressed in the plans that they're going to need to see. So if we want to start looking at data, this is from the Johns Hopkins like data dashboard that they've been gathering this data all along. And right now, the World Health Organization recommends that you should not reopen schools unless your positivity rate is below 5%. So this graph here has all the, this chart here has all the states. And there are 37 states that are higher than 5%. Massachusetts is not one of those. We are one of the 13, as is most all of New England, who are below the 5% threshold that is recommended when it comes to returning to school. And I know that this is one of the challenging things with this is, you know, if you watch Good Morning America, I'm sure everyone has seen the photos of the Texas, the Georgia high school with the packed hallway and the kids not wearing masks and all that kind of stuff. Well, if you look at this data, Georgia, I'm sure you can't read it, but I'll tell you, Georgia is way over in the orange section there, right? So if I was a superintendent in Georgia, I would have had a very difficult time looking at this data, looking at the guidance, and saying, I think it's safe to bring students back to school. But being a superintendent in Massachusetts, I think we can look at the guidance and we can look at the data and we can say, I think we can at least safely bring some of our kids back to school. More specifically, if we look at Clinton data, the Clinton positivity rate as of August 5th was 1.03%. That's below the state average of 1.82%. If you look at our cases by week, they release it every Wednesday. They kind of do these big updates every Wednesday. Between July 29th and August 5th, in the last week, there were two new cases. So Clinton, as a town, is doing very well in terms of our positivity rate. There are individual towns in Massachusetts or individual regions in Massachusetts that do still have a positivity rate up over 5%. So it may be appropriate for those communities to elect to start remote. We did have, we're kind of calling our soft opening. We did resume in-person classes this week. On August 3rd, our summer school programming at the elementary school and the middle school resumed. The first session of summer school was done remotely. And then the second session is done in person. We had approximately 50 students at the elementary school, about 15 at the middle school. There were actually even a couple at the high school. And it just gives you a snapshot of a couple of classrooms there. You can see the students, their desks are spaced six feet apart. They're wearing their masks. We tried to get the groups outside when we could, those types of things. Really, the students loved being back in school. And we didn't have issues with students wearing masks. They understand the importance of it and they were doing it. Now, it was only three hours at summer school, right? I'm not saying, and there were a couple little lessons learned, I'd say, from like the drop-off on the first day and trying to figure out whose teacher was who and how we keep people social distance while we do that. But overall, I think for, you know, for the first time, kids were in the building in months. I think it went very smoothly. We were able to get our PPE out to the teachers, do all those types of things. So from summer school to the fall, our school calendar, we're going to need to make some changes to the school calendar. And this would be kind of regardless of whatever model we end up opening in. The student days were reduced to 170 because the commissioner agreed to provide, we're working with the unions to provide 10 additional days of professional development. So these days will be spent learning a variety of things because there's so much to learn, but including like PPE and new protocols in buildings, but also how to make sure we're focusing on, you know, online learning platforms and technology and how to make sure that we're, all our teachers are equipped with all the right tools to make sure that we're successful in any model. And I think that's one of the things that happened last year. You know, it was, it happened so quickly that really not every teacher necessarily had the experience or the training in all the tools required to be necessary, to be effective in remote learning. Our first day for staff would be August 31st. That's the same as it was going to be originally. Our first day for students would be September 16th. That's actually, gives us 11 days to start the school year. One would be the kind of our, basically saying the first day is still sort of like our first day back and then the 10 days of professional development. And September 16th is the day that the commissioner has required you have to start school by. We're looking at two evening meeting dates and we'll talk about what those are for in a minute. Right now, tentatively looking at Wednesday, September 9th and Monday, September 14th, just because of some of the other conflicts and holidays around there and stuff. We're recommending for the school calendar that October 23rd become a full professional development day instead of a half day as was originally scheduled. And then March 5th, we would remain as a full day, PD day. And June 16th would remain as our scheduled last day of school. The nice thing is, if we're, with our plan being able to seamlessly go from one to the other, we're hoping that this year, in the event of a snowstorm or a heat day or a water main break, we should be able to say, instead of having to make up a day at the end of the year, it's a remote learning day. So parent meetings and student reacclimation. So if you remember in the last presentation, we thought of this sort of in three phases. The first phase was professional development for teachers, bringing them in. The second phase was trying to have some meetings with parents and students. We're hoping to be able to bring all parents and students in for scheduled meetings. So it's not, you know, do not like an open house. It would be scheduled meetings and we would spread them out. Each teacher would be responsible just for, like at the elementary school, meeting with the students in their class. At the high school level, maybe broken up more by like advisory, to just go over some basic things. You know, health and history concerns, the safety and hygiene protocols, wearing, what is expected for masks? What do we do for washing our hands? How do you drop off in the morning? Making sure we're issuing our technology. We are going to be one-to-one, so we'll be giving every single person a device if they don't already have one from us. And any other registration paperwork. So essentially, we're trying to have one meeting where they can come in and we can kind of get everything we need squared away for the year. So we're not sending home a bunch of paperwork and trying to track it down and doing all that kind of stuff. I mentioned those two evening nights. So the idea is we would have day and evening meeting times available. But like I said, we would schedule them. This wouldn't just be like a drop-in because we'd want to make sure we are being conscientious of limiting traffic and where we want to hold meetings. So that brings us to our proposed plan. Right now, we are proposing the hybrid model. Like I said, that is based on our local data and our guidance and recommendations from the state. Our model that we're proposing is one week in person and one week remote. We're looking at splitting groups alphabetically to try to help keep families on the same week. We will make some other considerations. We will talk later about the kind of registration type form, we're calling it, that we'll try to send out so that other considerations such as people in your, family members in your household with a different last name, or if you have some specific childcare concerns or if you have some other general concerns. I know we had some parents email that say they have, you know, two kids at home. And what they'd actually like to do is have one on one week and one on the other so that they only have to work with one kid at a time at home. And so I think we'd like to try to accommodate as many requests as we can. I mean, our goal would be to get feedback so that we can try to group our kids and develop our cohorts in a way that's going to be as, you know, as friendly as possible to families. High-needs students would be able to attend both weeks. So what does a high-needs student mean? If your student's on an IEP, they should have a form called Primary Disability Level of Need, PL3. So basically, it'll be based on that form. Also, English learners, we're still waiting some clarification from the state. There are different levels of English learners, you know, beginning. And the, we know that beginning will be able to attend. We're not sure of the other levels where that kind of cutoff is. We're waiting some clarification from the state on that. Homeless students, as well as students in foster care. So these are, these are students that were identified by the state as high-needs who should be able to attend both sessions of a hybrid schedule. By opening in a hybrid model, we should be able to have six feet of social distancing in each classroom. That was one of the big things. If we were going to go full reopening, it was going to present some challenges on the school buses and it would present some challenges on social distancing in the middle school classrooms. The remote week would be mostly independent or asynchronous time. And there would be some additional office hours or synchronous check-ins or specials, some various opportunities. But there would be times to check in with teachers throughout the week. And attendance during the remote week would mostly be captured through the digital learning platforms or attendance in synchronous sessions. And I think this is a little different than, while it sounds it's going to be, you know, fairly independent during the asynchronous, the remote week. It's a little different than like in March, right? So when we were, last year, we had many, many weeks of remote learning in a row. And it was difficult to, you know, really capture students. And I feel like kids, students became, one of the comments was students became, you know, disengaged. And here, although it's going to be a week, they are coming back. We are, we are going to have situations. We are going to have platforms that we're going to be able to monitor their engagement, their completion. And I think what we'll do is, we would end up doing is we would change some of those systems of supports for students who are having more difficulty. So if we needed to say, you know, maybe you needed to, maybe we need to require more of the synchronous sessions for you because you were having difficulty doing the work, we could do that and build those types of supports in place. So health and safety updates. We are proposing to bring students into the building. Our safety supplies have been procured. They talked about, you know, different things. We have masks, we have hand sanitizer for some of our classrooms that are, you know, a little more, or programs that might be a little more hands-on for younger kids or things like that. We have disposable gowns, gloves, things like that. The, you might see in the offices now, we have the partitions. All our HVAC systems are fully operational. We've worked with our HVAC contractor to get verification of that. There's additional hand washing stations that have been ordered. All nurses have an isolation room. We do have these negative air, negative pressure air scrubbers. I just know that was what it's called on the box. They've been installed in those areas to purify those air and make sure that the air is being sucked out of the room, not spreading into the, throughout the building. So the big update there, I put in bold with the stars, a lot of the feedback we got, a lot of the questions we got when we did our parent Q and A sessions was, okay, you're telling me that the HVA systems are fully operational as designed. But the middle school was designed in 1974. So is that sufficient? Okay? Now, everything we've read thinks, I believe it should be if we have windows and things like that open and we should be able to do that in September. However, this has come up a lot with a lot of buildings. So the DESE has provided a list of approved vendors who can provide an in-person assessment of physical space, basically really looking at your ventilation. So right now, we are trying to work to schedule an assessment, hopefully for all buildings, although we're not really as concerned about the elementary school or the high school because of the age of the building. So if we can't get them to do all buildings, CMS would be our priority. And they did say that those firms, they've been pre-approved by the state and that they are willing to provide both short-term and long-term solutions. So their solution, it might be that we may have to buy some sort of portable filters or something. They might say, we're fine. They might say, long-term, we should make these upgrades. But our goal is to try to get that firm in here prior to the September 16th date when we would have a lot of bodies in the building. So that we can try to, hopefully earlier than that, so that we would have some time to implement any, any specifically short-term fixes so we could get the building operational. The hybrid model in the in-person week, you know, these are the times. We had to stagger some of the times. Nine through 12 will still start at the same time. They will end earlier. It will be a reduced day. This will provide some time at the end of the day for the high school teachers to work with the students who are on the remote learning week. So after the students leave, but during, when it's still the teacher work day. We're able to run nine through 12 in one bus run, we predict, because of the number of students who drive and don't take the bus. At the middle school, we had to split it into two runs. So we'd have seventh and eighth grade on one run, starting at eight, fifth and sixth, starting at eight 30. Two, three, and four would start at nine, K and one at nine 30. We still are going to do, try to do an AM and PM session for pre-K. It's a little bit tight, but we, with the limited numbers, we should be able to have our custodial staff, we've worked, talk to Russ about. About making sure we're able to, uh, disinfect those rooms during the turnover because it's only three rooms. Oh, the only other thing I wanted to, to say is we have discussed this with DBUS. But we haven't mapped out the individual routes yet because we don't know the exact number of students who are coming back and who aren't. And we have to put them on the, uh, map out the routes and do those types of things. So just like, you know, schools sometimes have crazy schedules, um, it's possible that eight, eight o'clock could end up being eight oh five or something like that. If we realize when we mapped out the routes that we need five extra minutes for the bus. But this should be doable. This is our, this is our anticipated plan. What would that look like at the high school? The high school's going to go to a block schedule where the students would have four periods a day. There'd be four long blocks. You know, it would be pretty consistent. They would follow the same schedule whether they were in-person or whether they were remote. It would be kind of the same thing. Or if we went to a full hybrid, it would follow the same schedule. By reducing the number of periods in the day and by reducing the length of day, um, we're significantly reducing the amount of exposure. Both in time and to different cohorts of students. The high school would still need to transfer, uh, to, uh, transition from class to class, uh, due to the nature of, of the, uh, subject-specific licensing. However, we do feel that there's a level of, um, you know, there's a low maturity that we'll be able to, to use with the high school students as far as maintaining safety. And using different strategies of assigned seats, cleaning, cleaning classrooms when they're, when it's a prep period. Or a, um, uh, like a duty period, getting in the classrooms and making sure we're cleaning them. You know, to be honest with you, a lot of our high school students are, are working right now. We had a huge uptick in, in work permits since the school closure. The middle school schedule, uh, grades seven and eight, um, so they would be going on a six-period schedule, but they would be blocked. So you would have three blocks a day. You would also have what we had previously would always call a win period. We purposely kind of not calling it a win period because it's going to be a little bit different. Because there's not going to be as much movement, but it's still sort of like an intervention period. Uh, and you also have your lunch and those types of things. It would be built in. You would stay in the same class you were in the period before. So it would be one less transition during the day. We would be splitting into three teams, a seventh grade team, a seventh and eighth grade and eighth grade team. Once you were in your team, you would be assigned a class. That class would travel as a class all day. So you would be in, in one, with one class. On Friday, the plan is to have students see all six teachers. Uh, we have talked about looking at Fridays of doing something where teachers might travel or teachers might travel part of the period. So that we don't actually get six passing times in there. But they felt it was important for all teachers to see all students on Friday to help make sure that they're prepared for the expectations for the next week when they wouldn't be here. Grades five and six would be two-person teams like it has been, STEM and humanities team. Um, we are scheduled for eight sections of each, so they would be partnered up. Uh, this is kind of a sample schedule, but it's going to be a little different because it's basically going to be, you're going to have one long class in the morning. You're going to have one long class in the afternoon. And different things like specials or recess or things like that are going to be built into your day. The reason why it's harder to really give you a schedule is because a lot of times, a, a typical fifth and sixth grade schedule, you might just have a blocked off time and you say, this is fifth grade recess. But we don't want every class out at the same time right now. So there would be probably each individual class will have times when they're going to have a special push into their room. Or when they might go to recess, or there might be a couple that can go out on the fields because we have enough fields. But it's going to be a lot more an individually tailored schedule so that we can match our people and our space to keep our cohorts as separated as possible. The elementary school, um, I mean, the elementary school is going to look like a pretty normal, uh, elementary school in terms of the fact that the, it's a self-contained cohort. You're in your classroom pretty much the whole day. The two differences they would have is that they would not be leaving their classroom for any type of special. If they were going to have art today, it would be the art teacher coming to them. And then if they're going to, most likely going to be eating lunch in the classroom. However, we also are looking at trying to eat lunch outside as much as possible. So as long as the weather holds up, we try to get the students outside for both lunch and recess to give them breaks from the, from the classroom. So during the remote learning week, uh, teachers will provide their students with a schedule. It'll identify the asynchronous learning lessons and assignments for basically things that they're supposed to do independently. Either on, you know, traditional pen and paper type work, um, particularly at some of the younger grade levels. Or it could be more, um, uh, online learning opportunities. There are opportunities for synchronic- synchronous sessions, uh, morning meetings. Uh, at the elementary school, we do want to make sure that a couple of times a week. That the, the students who are home are able to, uh, connect in with the students who are in school. So that we can have sort of that, build that class together a little bit. And same thing at the elementary school, we'd probably have a specials period that, that, like for the grade level where they would be able to, um, sign in. So if you want to do like second grade's art class would be the certain time. And the same extra hours in office help. Like I said, some of that will be more independent, like you can access it if you need it, as long as you're making progress with your asynchronous learning. Some of it may be more required, especially if you're someone who's having difficulty, um, engaging or completing your work. Attendance will be monitored through learning platforms and attendance in synchronous sessions if they're required. In terms of technology access and online learning platforms, um, all students will be issued Chromebook grades K to twelve. We'll also provide hotspots to those families who need internet access. Uh, we did provide, we did apply for a technology grant. The state offered a twenty-five, uh, twenty-five million dollars that they were offering in technology grants, uh, to fill any gaps. So we put in for the additional hotspots we anticipated we would need and the final, uh, Chromebooks we think we would need to make sure that we would be able to, um, go K to twelve. And we did get approved for eighty-six thousand dollars for that grant. So we are able to, um, so we were able to purchase all the, the remaining technology that we needed. All grades will use a specific uniform digital learning platform. The learning management system, it'll be Google Enterprise for education. Uh, so there's regular Google and then there's this Google Enterprise. So we have purchased the kind of upgraded version of Google. Um, once it's all ready to roll, it should allow us to do some different things. One of the key things was, um, it should, it's supposed to allow you to kind of blur out the background in your video. Which is something that we thought was important in terms of if we go to remote learning. One of the things we heard is sometimes that students are, uh, and staff, don't necessarily want everyone seeing inside their home. Right? So this would be a way of sort of, uh, blocking that. Zoom has that capability. We could change your background. Uh, Google Meet did not, so this should have that. Some additional things, um, like breakout rooms and those types of things. Collaboration tools, we would be using same thing, Google Meet, Google Drive, Google Calendar, uh, those are, and like I said, there would be kind of the upgraded version of that. There's some other things that Enterprise comes with too. There's some, um, plagiarism checkers and those types of things that are, that are built into the Enterprise for Education model. Then for content platforms. So how have you delivered content? So K to six, it would be, they'd be using Great Minds, uh, Great Minds in sync for ELA and math. This is an online version that supports the actual curric- physical curriculum we're doing in the building. So the, our math program has been Eureka Math. Great Minds for E, for, uh, Great Minds in C, in sync is an online Eureka platform. The, our ELA program going into this year would be Wit and Wisdom. And Great Minds in sync, it is a Wit and Wisdom online learning platform. So it is directly correlated to what we're doing already, um, in our classrooms. So whether you're in class, whether it's this year or next year, or, or whether you're at home, we should all be working on that same, that same curriculum. K to eight will be using a program called iReady. Um, it's an assessment program. It gives a diagnostic assessment beginning of the year. Then it helps to map out a learning pathway. So the purpose of iReady is to help us identify learning gaps. So things that maybe you missed out on last year, things maybe you missed out on two years ago. That might be, uh, fundamental skills that we want you to try to build up on. Once it has that learning path, there's online lessons you'll do with assessments. Teachers can monitor exactly, you know, how much time you're spending, how you're doing on your lessons, how you're doing on those assessments. They can use that data to help group their own students. So when they have you for the in-person week, they know just from that snapshot who's struggling where. And then in grade six to twelve, again, we'll be using, uh, Edge Newity. So I kind of bolded that and put stars. That's a new one. We were waiting for the, uh, state to come out with guidance on what they were recommending for a content platform. They essentially came out recommending two. Uh, one was Edge Newity. The other one was like a Florida virtual school or something like that. We had already had a team that had been meeting with vendors and, and going through and assessing our content platforms. And Edge Newity, Edge Newity and one other one were kind of like number one and number two. We were just sort of waiting to see what the state endorsed. When the state endorsed Edge Newity, we got our team together. The team said, yep, let's go with Edge Newity. So we were able to, uh, purchase that program. And actually because, because we had a quote from Edge Newity from prior to the state endorsement, we actually got it at a better rate than the state rate. But that's, and it's all covered by a part of the, uh, the reopening grants. Uh, we're also trying to go with the single sign-on platform, uh, Clever. Uh, so the idea with Clever, once we get it up and running, is that it would should make your life easier. You sign onto Clever and you would have a dashboard and you wouldn't have to sign into fifty different things. You sign into one thing. So here's the content platform. So I'm going to try just to show a couple of videos, see, kind of see what these look like. We'll see how it works. If we struggle with it, then people can watch the links on their own. We got the first one to go. Okay. So let's see.
Welcome to Edge Newity, where learning clicks. Edge Newity offers learning and online solutions with a warm, witty curriculum that improves student outcomes. We deliver a range of core curriculum, AP, elective, career and technical education, and credit recovery courses. Aligned to the rigor and high expectations of national and state standards. All designed to inspire lifelong learners. In the next few minutes, we will walk you through Edge Newity's solution from both the student and teacher's experience. In this demonstration, we will use our algebra loan course. Let's first take a look at the student experience. When a student logs into our platform, they'll be taken to the lobby where they can check messages, view announcements, and access their courses. Students can see their course progress and current grades for each course. Our instructional model includes a warm-up, instruction, summary, assignment, and assessments for each lesson. We believe students learn best through engaging, interactive instruction delivered by expert on-screen teachers. We use graphics and animations to bring lessons to life, explain concepts, model strategies, and provide examples. Our interactive learning tools and scaffolds make it easy for students to take notes, organize information, and complete assignments. Read lab and translation tools make content accessible to all students, including English language learners. A lesson transcript allows students to follow along with the teacher. Students are assessed throughout lessons to ensure subject mastery. Now let's take a look at the educator's process. As students work, educators are able to see real-time student data. So they can differentiate instruction and customize courses to meet student needs. Educators can rearrange or remove units, lessons, and activities, and add their own activities to lessons. Real-time student progress is closely monitored by educators. Teachers can evaluate both students' and class performance in the lesson mastery report. Teachers can sort information by standards to see exactly what standards your students have mastered and which ones they're struggling with. See how your students are performing as a whole group or individually. And provide targeted feedback to students as they progress in the course. From our extensive reporting capabilities to our rigorous and engaging curriculum. Edge Newity provides the flexible model you need to personalize learning for every student. Edge Newity, where learning clicks.
Okay. So I just wanted to share a couple of those so you can kind of see sort of what, what that learning platform looks like, what some of the different type of features are. But that being said, I do want to say that when we looked at these content platforms, we view them as helping to provide a backbone and a tool for teachers to use. Right? So the goal is we're not just, um, simply saying, hey, we're just going to use Edge Newity this year. And devaluing like the impact of an educator or a teacher. We still know that teachers are important. And we know that teachers help make that connection between the curriculum. They're going to help students, um, you know, bridge that gap. They're also going to be able to go above and beyond and enhance this. But what we wanted to do was provide, uh, the tools and the backbone. So that our, if we're in a full remote situation in particular, that students are able to progress learning Massachusetts standards. And that teachers aren't, aren't left in a situation where they were last year, where they really had to kind of fend for themselves. So, uh, we think this is going to be a great opportunity, uh, to have more of a, you know, hopefully it's more of like a blended learning experience. We use, we do use Edge Newity right now in the alternative program, um, at the high school and it is more of a, um, they use it. They are, they have, um, teachers from Edge Newity on the backend and then they are supported a little bit by our staff in-house. This is not what we're aiming for with this. We're still aiming to keep that classroom connection. We just want to provide teachers the resources. One of the things that mentioned was the ability to be customizable and that was a key thing that we were looking for when we were assessing these platforms. Was the ability for teachers to be able to use this as a tool to support what they need to teach, not just be running through a, a canned curriculum. Uh, the Great Minds, I'm going to skip the Great Minds video for now. There is a link there, but it's, it doesn't get as much into the, um, the, the platform. It doesn't really show you what the, what the user platform would look like. So the remote learning option. So this is an updated one too. This is something that we would say based on parent feedback. And based on the remote learning guidance issued by the state on August fourth. We've kind of changed our strategy a little bit for the remote learning option. So all students will be issued a device for remote learning, um, but students will be assigned to a class or classes taught by CPS staff members. So if you remember the original plan, the last draft kind of said, you know, that we'd be using a third-party system and that we would be kind of supporting them and checking in on them. And we heard a lot of concerns from parents about that. They didn't want their students to feel like they were kind of being punished or, or, you know, kind of like pushed out of the system. know, kind of like pushed out of the system if they weren't able to return. At the same time, when we looked at sort of, you know, the state was saying they were gonna provide some solutions for that, when we looked at the solutions they offered, we didn't feel that they were solutions that met our needs. So we rethought that, and now it'll be basically, students will be assigned to class or classes taught by CPS staff. How exactly is that going to look? We're going to schedule it, but we need to, the first thing we need to do is find out the data. So one of the things we'll be doing is asking people soon to let us know which option they're taking, and I will get to that in a minute. So the content platforms that are used in this remote learning option would be the same as the hybrid model, right? So, or the same as our full remote model. Basically, the same, the content platforms we're using are gonna be the content platforms we're using across all of them. Classes, in this case, would probably follow a schedule more similar to the in-person schedule, because part of what we're thinking we're going to need to do is, for example, a teacher at the high school, if there's enough students at the high school, select the remote learning option, maybe one of their five classes that they teach in the schedule becomes a remote class. And they, so they teach four in-person Algebra I's, and their fifth Algebra I is a remote one. Same thing at the middle school. At the elementary school, it'll probably be a little different. When we look at like the number of students in a grade, we're gonna look at the, how many people selected they'd like the remote learning option, how many people said that they would like the in-person option, and then we'll create class lists to try to match those up. The other good thing we think that that will do is it will allow us some opportunities and flexibility to help meet some of the needs of our teachers as well. We do have teachers that have different concerns, and by having some class sections, particularly at the elementary level, that might be almost fully remote, we might be able to help accommodate some of those needs. So our goal is to try to match up the needs of the students with the needs of our staff to try to make sure that we can, we can match those as best we can. I guess I would say that we've been having a lot of conversations with the CTA throughout this, and I think so far, they've been very solution-focused. I think we've had, working with our union has been, has been good so far. I think we're trying to, you know, we want, you know, teachers bring up concerns, we want them to bring up concerns, 'cause we wanna address those, 'cause we wanna make sure that we're addressing everything. And I think that, you know, moving forward, hopefully, once we, once we figure out the exact scheduling breakdown and everything, we'll be able to try to match up those needs and make, and hopefully we'll be able to find solutions to meet the needs of our students and hopefully accommodate needs of our staff. Attendance will be taken in the remote learning option, assignments will be graded, very similar to if we went to a full remote learning model, okay? And actually, as I was gonna say, in the elementary school, it might look more like the full remote plan, if you're in one of these classes, than the, than the in-person schedule, because you're kinda more isolated as your individual cohort. So the student registration form, so the next piece of data we really need to know is between the hybrid version of returning to school and between the online or remote option of learning from home, which one are you gonna select for your student? So we're gonna send out a form, the goal is to get this form out tomorrow, where we would, you would ask you to select which of the programs, in-person learning or full-time remote learning, what we've been calling the online learning model. If you choose the hybrid or the in-person learning model, we're gonna ask you some questions on cohort development, right? So we talked about this a little bit. Are there other students in your household with different last names that you'd like to be in the same cohort? What are your transportation needs specifically? I mean, we ask you for various ones, in case we need to add bike racks or something like that, but the main one is, are you taking the bus? Any childcare needs or considerations, meaning, you know, if you have your neighbor, you and your neighbor are gonna watch each other's kids on the off weeks, but your, one has the last name A and one has the last name with Z, but you'd like to be on the same week, we'd like to try to accommodate those as much as we can. Like I said, we'd like to try to meet the needs of as many families as possible. And the last one would be any additional requests, like I mentioned, some families inquired about, could I have one student on one week and one student on another week? I mean, I don't see why not, if that's gonna make it, make it work better for you, so go ahead and tell us those requests. Well, we would ask, we've had a lot of people since the last plan who started kind of emailing principals these requests, and I know the principals have been good, pretty much saying, please wait until like when there's a form, put it on the form, 'cause we don't wanna lose things through the email. So if you have, even if you feel you've already communicated these, please put them in the form again. And like I said, those forms should be coming out tomorrow, and we're gonna give you to August 18th. Really like you to please try to complete them by the 18th, 'cause our plan is the 19th to start, just when our admin team is meeting at 8:00 in the morning on the 19th to start scheduling, determining basically how many virtual sections, how many of the, like, full remote sections do we need, how many in-person sections do we need, start breaking up the cohorts, so we can start figuring out the bus runs and all that kinda stuff. Just some final parent guardian reminders, we ask you to provide your student with a mask. Hopefully, there's students getting used to maybe wearing a mask now, if you're taking them out in public at all. Encourage your student to maintain social distance. Like I said, even if these are things you can remind them, whether they're, you know, involved in other activities, reminding them to wash your hands frequently, and just a final reminder, please don't send your student to school if they may be sick. So recommended plan, when we finish the presentation, I'm sure we might have some questions, but we're recommending, and we'd like to take a vote, is to open school on September 16th in a hybrid format, plan on this model through October 22nd. It works out pretty close, based on the number of days. No later than the October 5th school committee meeting, we would try to figure out what would our plan look like beyond October 22nd. But I do wanna put a caveat there, that we may adjust plans earlier based on current state and local data, and I should even add in there state guidance, right? So if any guidance would change, or our data would change, and we would be forced to go into like a remote learning situation earlier, then we would. I'm trying to follow the guidelines, I'm trying to listen to the data, so like, we started the presentation, and I said, if I were a superintendent in Georgia, I wouldn't be comfortable bringing students back. If our data were to change, if we were to see an increase in our positivity rate before September 16th, I would be the first one to say, I think we need to switch to full remote right away. Or if we came back to school on September 16th and we saw that by September 23rd, then we would say, yep, we'll go to full remote. I do think it's important that we try to get students into school now, though. I feel like there's a window we have right now where our positivity rate is low, and we know that it is gonna get confusing as we get into the winter, because it's gonna start, as students start getting just regular colds, and as students start getting maybe a traditional flu, it's gonna be very difficult to differentiate those symptoms from COVID symptoms, once we get into the winter months. And I, my concern is, if we don't try to at least bring students in, to, to check on their wellbeing, to establish connections and relationships with them now, while we have a chance, the next time we might have a chance might be March. So that's why I think it's a, it's a, you know, I feel passionately that if the data, right now, if the data stays the way it stays, the guidance stays the way it stays, we should try to bring our students in to support them. I think that's the best thing for students. Like I said, if it changes, I'll be the first one to say, let's follow the guidance, let's follow the data, and let's do what's right for students. So what would our next steps be? We'd communicate our final plans, the draft of the final plan has a letter to the community in it, we would send that letter to the community out, we would also get the registration form out. Our goal would be to distribute that information tomorrow, based on whatever action the committee takes tonight. We would email that registration form to parents and guardians, if we do the 18th. We'd also do a phone call, so parents and guardians know it went out, if they don't get the emails, and we would offer to be able to mail you one or create some other opportunity if you're having trouble with an online form. They are gonna do some building-based question answers, so what they're gonna do, and you'll get more specific information from the principals, but they're gonna have a method for you to kind of, to submit your questions, and they'll try to answer them as best they can, but then we're gonna hold a final, the Q&amp;A parent session, similar to what we did last week, on the 17th. So it's the Monday before we come back. We just kinda, that was, we wanted to wait a little bit, we didn't wanna do it like tomorrow or Wednesday, 'cause we wanted people to be able to sort of process this, think about things that might come up, you know, what are some childcare questions you might have, what are some specific questions you might have? You might try to get those answered through an email or whatever process, or share them on like a Google forum, so that they can be addressed. And then Monday, the 17th, before those forms are due the next day, we have a chance to really answer anything in-person in general. And then our goal is to start the scheduling process on August 19th, so hopefully we can try to get, pull all of this together with cohort development and bus routes and everything. Our goal is to try to get that pulled all together by, like, August 31st, so we have it ready for when the teachers come back, and then we can start from there. So that's, I think, concludes my presentation, so I guess if we just wanna maybe pause for a minute, so we can regroup, and then we'll take some questions from the committee? Oh, yeah, you can turn that off.
Testing one. Well, first, I wanna say thank you to you, Dr. Meyer, to your team, for a truly comprehensive, comprehensive district reopening plan. I imagine the committee may have some questions, so we wanna make sure that...
Joel, hold on one second. I think we need the, it wasn't picking up your sound, I couldn't see it. Oh, yeah, did you guys turn them off? Trust, trust.
Testing one, two.
Alright, it's picking that up, yep.
Are we good?
Oh, there you go, that's good.
So once again, I guess I wanna say thank you to you, Dr. Meyer, and to your team for this thorough document, and wanna make sure that the committee has an opportunity to ask any questions that they may have at this time.
Do you like to stand down?
Yep.
I said one thing, and I think this is awesome, but is there a way we can put this out, not, not just this plan, but going forward, put this out on the Clinton cable channel? Just, I know they hang this out on the, on...
Oh, in the scrolling?
Yeah, like, so you put this out there, and then as you're going forward, so, you know, each week, the agenda kinda for the next week, just one more way to get this out to the public. I know they're gonna have tons of questions, but, you know, I see it on, you know, social media, I see it on the, I know they do a great job getting it on the district page, but it seems to me that they, we have our own cable channel.
For the public's consumption, you mean, as well?
What's that?
For the public's consumption as well?
Yeah, yeah, this, this whole plan, just putting it out onto the cable, cable TV, just so it's, I don't know, is that, is that too difficult, or?
No, I think we'll try to get it out as many ways as we can. I mean, normally, that's why we have the other recording, we do try to get these onto the cable TV, but also, if our recording ends up, you know, working out well even from this meeting or from our live stream, we could look to try to get that out there as well, or at least put it on our, put it on our website as well, any, any way we can. I mean, certainly, we're trying to get this information out there, it's not, you know, we're, we're trying to be transparent about it. It's difficult, I feel like, so people know, you know, literally, I think I was here 10 hours on Sunday trying to get the final touches on the plan, based on all the updated guidance and those types of things. I mean, there's a lot of, things are changing very rapidly, when you have to get, you know, you get a, get a document in, and then you have to figure out, how does that impact this? And what's the trickle effect throughout the document, updating the data, those types of things, so.
Thank you. Other questions? So I, I have a question with regard to Edgenuity and the model, that that serves as a supplement to the CPS curriculum from 6 through 12 for just the remote learning, or for the hybrid as well?
We'll use it in the hybrid model as well.
So those off weeks?
A lot of, a lot of the asynchronous opportunities during those off weeks would be through, like, Edgenuity.
So, so should, should parents presume then that there will be new material introduced in the in-person week, and then extensions of that new material via Edgenuity in the remote week?
Uh, no, we'll probably still continue with promoting, presenting new material and introducing it through Edgenuity. So their lessons are fully, you know, comprehensive, and they have a lot of those, like I said, they have the warm-ups, the checks for understanding, they're very interactive, even to move on from like one area to the other, there's checks for understanding, and displays of the, you know, nice visual displays of content and those types of things. It might not be as, you know, there still might be areas that like, either before or when you come back in the hybrid model, that you're gonna have to get those filled in, it's not gonna necessarily be like, you know, exactly what we did. We're not gonna chase it, like, it's not gonna be like, what we do this week, you just do this week, and one cohort is behind, but there still might be, you know, there's gonna be adjustments. If we know that this group was, you know, kinda getting this material introduced to them through the asynchronous lessons, we're gonna have to check on that understanding and maybe supplement some of that in-person when they come back, based on their level of understanding.
No, but I, I think parents would appreciate knowing that the model has new learning throughout, whether you're in-person, whether you're in your hybrid remote, or whether you're full remote, I just, that's, that's a solution that not everyone has come to, so.
And I think part of it is, we wanna try to get students comfortable with the learning platform, because we know that, like I said, I, I would anticipate fully that at some point this winter, all schools in Massachusetts are gonna get, have to, have to go to full remote. And it might not have anything to do with positivity rates, our positivity rates might still be low. The problem is, once students start getting colds and those types of things, we're not gonna be able to differentiate the difference between COVID symptoms and like the common cold. So what's gonna end up happening is now, we're gonna have to sort of follow the mechanisms that are in the state guidance about, you know, if you have so many, you know, if they're gonna be, isolate a class, isolate a cohort, and I think eventually that's gonna get to the point where there's gonna almost be like a, a winter break. So I think having this opportunity in hybrid early, like I said, we can form connections with the students, we can also get them used to learning on the platforms, on the hybrid week, with a chance to then help correct any issues or address any issues when they come back in person.
I, I also just, you know, putting a school committee and parent and principal hat on at the same time, appreciate the attempt to open under a hybrid model, making those connections with children, especially our youngest learners, is, is so critical, and, I appreciate all the effort that, that goes into it, and these are scary times, there's no, no doubt about that, but I think that, you know, when, when the data's telling us that we can do it, and combined with the fact that if, you know, a family is in a situation where they might be, have health compromises, there is a full remote plan, and, and if that didn't exist, then I might feel differently, but, but, you know, I'm fully supportive of where we are at this point in time. Any other questions?
Steve, I just have one. Because we'll be leveraging technology as much as we, we will be, whether you're hybrid or remote, have we built into our plan or anticipated more headcount for tech support?
Yeah, so I did talk to Mike McEckern, who's here tonight, helping us get sound, and we are trying to identify, I think we are gonna be able to, I'll probably have some proposals for you, as we kinda get closer to looking at, you know, hopefully at some point, the state comes up with a budget, they did release preliminary Chapter 70 numbers, which actually Clinton received more Chapter 70, well, is scheduled to receive more Chapter 70 money than the budget was based on. So I don't know when they finally have a budget, if we would have a special town meeting that could potentially change the, the allocation to the schools. But regardless, I think with a lot of the opening grants that we've got, I mean, the state has been supportive in terms of, you know, the, we got $280,000 in the ESSR money, we've got $440,000 in the PPE money, we got $86,000 in technology money, so there's these different grants that they're giving out to schools, all schools are getting, and most of, you know, most of those are pretty much, the PPE one was based, just the headcount, you know, it's whatever your enrollment is times $225. And so with some of those grants, we might be able to kinda leverage some things around, and I've talked to Mike about trying to at least add one more person to the technology staff to, to help. What we're trying to figure out is, what does that mean? And Mike thinks it might be better for us to hire someone who's more of like an integration specialist, to help work with teachers on the front end, not necessarily... specialist to help work with teachers on the front end, not necessarily with him and Russ on the back end of the technology. So that's what we're trying to, trying to look at now, but you're exactly right. I mean, that's where we got is when we've just doubled the amount of devices and the platforms and stuff overnight, we got to get some more help to manage that.
Yeah, and I'm also thinking from the perspective of, you know, your parents become the advocates for the children who are now leveraging technology, and we may want to at least, you know, brainstorm about, could we create some sort of ticketing system, or if a parent is having a problem as an end user, or a child is having a problem as an end user, what's their conduit to Mike or to our IT team?
Yeah.
To then say, here's the issue we're experiencing, and it could be they're just not familiar with the technology. It could be a simple fix, but we're probably going to think about some sort of an SLA we're going to want to have with those parents and those devices to do those cares checks, those health checks.
And something so it's not...
It just comes along with it. It's just kind of when you leverage technology, that's just a piece of the puzzle.
Does the existing ticketing system, does it have that capacity to extend that to the end user?
I don't know if it would have the capacity to, as far as talking, the end user meaning the students and the parents, I don't know if it would have that, if it would go that far.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reopening plan for submission to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any other questions?
I just had something quick I wanted to ask. I'm sure the state is going to give us some guidelines before we open to make sure it's communicated to parents and, like, what exactly is the process if a student goes to the nurse's office and is sent home with a fever?
Yeah.
Without, you know, everybody kind of panicking and what is, do we, do we have like testing available, or is it something that we send the child home and then we don't do anything for two or three days until we know, or I just want to, I feel like I would be comforted by knowing that we have a set process.
So there is, there is, one of these giant packets in this binder is all just on that specifically on, and there is a summary chart in the plan itself, right? You're right, though, there is a point where, at what point do we say, like, you know, if it's a fever, you could have a fever for a lot of reasons.
Right, right.
So when does it trigger like, that we're saying the whole class can't come back? When does it trigger that, you know, whole grade can't come back, those types of things? So we are still working on more clarification from that with the state. A big part of that, we're trying to build our communication with the Board of Health, that's why we have the Safety Committee meeting with the Board of Health, because that's who they want us to refer to, because they're making those calls now all the time. I mean, that's the other thing, too, like the Board of Health, you know, they make a decision based on, you know, what, what happens at the state pool, right? If something happened in a, in a restaurant, they would determine how they're going to handle things like contact tracing and quarantining and those types of things. So certainly, we would work with the Board of Health on those things to try to figure out, at what level do they want us to do that? The DESE also wants us to contact them before we consider like closing the school or closing the district, because they want, they have a team that they want to help advise us on that. So if we needed to make that decision. But I do think that that's, you know, that's a little bit of the concern, is at what point is that line drawn, you know? And I think that the, that's part of why we kind of, part of why we liked this model week on, week off, is because it does provide sort of nine days in between your contact sessions, so there is sort of time, if we did have to go into sort of like an isolation, like let's say something happened on a Thursday, kid was sick and we needed to say like, hey, we're going to isolate this classroom, we're going to ask you to stay home. Okay, well, they stay home Friday, and then it's a 10-day waiting period in the guidance. So now they would still be able, as long as none of them present symptoms, they'd all be able to come back at their next session. So we think that that, that gives us that time, gives us a little space to help handle those types of things, too, so we can have that time to see, was this just, you know, something random, or was this a COVID symptom? And one more thing I would say, the state did say that they were working on trying to provide opportunities for more, at least rapid testing for teachers, so that we could try to, hopefully, like if a teacher was, you know, if there's a student that we might have concern about, the teacher would be exposed to, so we'd want to be able to get the teacher almost rapidly tested so that we could know for sure, and then they might be able to resume working with the next cohort, the next day. So the state said they were working on that, we haven't got more follow-up on that yet. Hopefully, we will.
Thank you.
Anything else? So the vote that we will be casting tonight not only approves the reopening plan, this comprehensive plan encompassing all of the potential plans, but endorses Clinton Public Schools opening at this time and based on the data in a hybrid model, just so everybody's clear on that. Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. So consequently, we would also have, we'll entertain a motion to accept the revised school calendar as well. You have that in your packet?
I'll make that motion.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion on the amended calendar?
So I'm sure we could address this as the years, as the year goes on, but unless the state comes and says anything about February or April vacations, for the most part, if we do end up going to a remote model, it wouldn't affect our days in, towards 170 days that we need to have anyway, so.
Right, so I mean, I know last year, there were some schools that tried to, like, take away April vacation to kind of go through it. You know, I don't know that that's, you know, we'd have to see where we are when we get to that point, I guess, but I think that the, you know, I think the idea is that this year, that the learning should be, even if it's fully remote, it should be much more structured. It should be, you know, kids will be logging on four classes at specified times, there will be, you know, we have to be accountable for time on learning and attendance and grading. So I do think that it's much more likely that we would probably still honor those vacations this year because it wouldn't necessarily be the emergency schooling that we did last year.
Anything else? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
All right. The next one I just wanted to share with you, this is not finalized, we don't have to take any action on it, but I just wanted to let you know that there's, this is a professional development plan around UDL, Universal Design for Learning. This is something our administrative team participated in, a universal design for learning professional development earlier this month. And then the, the rest of the week, there was actually a team consisting of administrators and representative, teacher representatives from each building, who developed kind of this plan and tried to identify some objective areas. So our first objective area was a tier one curriculum and instruction, really focusing more at the elementary level around wit and wisdom, and then Eureka or Looney Math. Our objective two was to work on, it's worded as implementing a digital curriculum, but basically making sure that teachers are able to work with and use the edgenuity platform so that they can leverage that as sort of a backbone for learning. Initiative three was utilizing the I Ready K to Eight Assessment to support database decision-making, try to make sure we're looking at that to figure out gaps on learning and using, having our win teams look at that, our intervention teams. Initiative four was providing PD options to support the understanding and utilization of universal design for learning, which we think is a big deal. Universal design for learning is really about removing barriers. And whether we're in a remote situation, whether we're in a hybrid situation, whether we're in an in-person situation, we want to be able to remove barriers for learning and really focus on, you know, it's really focusing on, you know, what is the standard we're trying to, what is it that we want the student to be able to know and be able to do and not let sort of the mechanism in which we are trying to get them to do that be a roadblock. So I think universal design for learning is a, it's a foundation for the MTSS, the Tiered System of Support, but it's also, I think, very relevant in this, in this new sort of educational model where we have to be flexible. And we do actually have technical assistance days with the Eureka Consulting Company that we'll be using, we'll have teachers, that's one of the things that they will be doing during those 10 professional development days at different scheduled times, they would be meeting with our technical assistance people to help look at how they're creating plans for the hybrid, the hybrid weeks, the remote weeks, the in-person weeks, those things. Initiative five was to conduct an equity audit and to begin to address issues of access and equity, and that's something that we do want to continue on. That is very much a, it's still a, it's still a topic that don't want to get lost in the, very important topic, we don't want to get lost in the midst of all the reopening plans, but making sure we're keeping access and equity in mind, we want to make sure that we are still working on that as well. So that's just a draft, I just wanted to share that with you, though, because it was, it was a solid sort of weeks worth of work with our consultant, going through learning about UDL, learning about sort of how to develop these implementation plans, mapping it out to our strategic plan, mapping it out to our data from the, that the work the elementary school's been doing, other school data we had. So it was a very, it was a very productive group, and like I said, it was, it's not only the administrators, we had teacher representatives from every building on that team, so they did a nice job. The next update is just a, it was just a letter from the Health Alliance, Clinton Hospital. So last year, the UMass Memorial Health Alliance Hospital had to do a, they have to, part of what they need to do as a community hospital is to, is to basically give out some grants sometimes when they do different things. So they had a determination of needs studied on, and then you could do a proposal to get funding. So we did a proposal, I have the letter here that I sent in on February 26th. So this was, these were literally due, you know, right, kind of right before everything happened, basically saying that we would be looking for tier three funding to help create our family welcome center in the central office, and this is back when we were still talking about Student Opportunity Act funding, and we were still trying to hire family outreach coordinators and all those types of things. So the proposal of this, as far as our letter of intent, was to add a second person to the family welcome center in addition to the family outreach coordinator. So we did get invited, they basically said, based on our initial letter of intent, we're invited to apply for round two. Essentially, we made it through the first cut of the grant. I still think our proposal is very relevant in terms of, I think we can still keep it, trying to fill sort of that family outreach component, which I think, especially if we're in full remote or especially in hybrid, might even be more, more relevant, but we'll be able to, to fill that out. So I just wanted to let you know that that was, it's taken a while, but it was a, it definitely was a, it was nice to finally hear that they moved us forward, and I think that hopefully we'd be able to get some funding to support that community initiative. The last item I had here was just on the retirees celebration. What we'd like to propose, I know we had, we talked about doing retirees celebration on August 24th, which is our next meeting. We have had some very recent retirees, and I just feel like it might be worth it to push it back beyond the August 31st, first day of school, as we kind of work to finalize everything right now. I know there are a few other teachers who have done, made some inquiries about, you know, where they stand in those types of things, and we just want to make sure that we, if we represent, if we recognize our retirees, we recognize all of our retirees. So we would like to kind of postpone that recognition, I don't know if we want to pick another night now, and we can try to schedule it, if you want to wait and see sort of how things are going, I don't know what the, you know, we could look at something like September 21st is designated as celebrations, or October 19th is designated as celebrations. You know, we could, we could try to do something like that.
What's the pleasure of the committee?
I would go more towards September because you never know what October's going to bring.
Okay.
I didn't hear what she said.
She said that not knowing what, as we get further into the fall, October and beyond, she would advocate for September, is that correct?
Correct.
Anyone opposed to that? So we'd look at the celebration date in September?
Okay.
At least we can tentatively schedule it, and if...
And maybe at that point, at that point, we'll know definitely who's retired and who hasn't, because we'll be back at school. And we can still recognize them, even if it's, even if it's something virtual, and if we need to invite them back for cake in the spring, we can do that, but at least we can get something to them at that point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's the date on that?
September 21st. All right, I believe that is all I have from my...
Thank you.
Report.
Thank you. Do we have any updates from our committees? I know, obviously, the Safety Committee met and, you know, please extend our thanks to all of the Safety Committee members for their hard work.
I will work on trying to get, now that we kind of have a little more formal clarity on sort of reopening, I'll probably try to work on maybe getting a back-to-school newsletter together. I know we've been, been swamped in a lot of this other stuff, but I think that's a good time to maybe put some, another, you mentioned, trying to get this information out everywhere, get that out in that newsletter format as well.
Yeah. I will say with regard to policy, would like to set a meeting, there's a couple of MASC advisory updates, you have them in your packet, and we're going to want to meet probably before, well, in our next meeting as possible.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, we've included all these, the updates and the policies themselves in the, in the, in the packet for you. We're not recommending taking any action on these policies tonight, we are recommending that, I mean, their purpose is so that the Policy Committee could hopefully meet between, if we can do it in between now and next meeting, so we could try to get some of those in place. Because we'd like, we'd like to try to get, you know, some of these, like a policy on face coverings, even the Title IX, that does, those new regulations go into effect, remote learning, those are all things that, you know, we're going to want to have those in place, hopefully by the start of school.
Exactly.
So we'd like to try to get those on the August 24th agenda. So I don't know, and we can just...
No, I, we'll just, we'll have the Policy Subcommittee set a date.
Okay.
And between the next two weeks and make sure that we have, we've gone over these.
And I know the first one's kind of confusing, the guidance on policy issues for the pandemic, and they talk about all these different things, and we can talk about it when we get to Policy Subcommittee, they've tried to come out with some clarification on that. Essentially, what they're saying is some of these policies, you might be able to do almost sort of like a blanket addendum for them, that basically is temporary until, you know, the COVID is not an issue. But the main thing it's doing is just trying to essentially grant the superintendent some authority in certain cases so that they could make the decisions as far as like, if we had to shift from, you know, hybrid to remote based on an issue or a data or whatever, it's not like we have to have a school committee meeting to vote to do that, we can just do that.
Do you want us to take action on that tonight with regard to, you know, granting you those emergency powers, if you will?
I don't, no, I, you know, I think, I think we should talk about it as Policy Committee, and then we'll present and see what we like.
Okay.
I don't need...
Well, I just meant that if, you know, if the data precipitously changed both between now and our next meeting, but...
Okay. I think, I mean, I think we'll be, given it's still the summer, I think we'll be okay if we get it till the 24th. Obviously, if there are rapid changes, we'll, I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, okay. And negotiations, Subcommittee?
We did meet.
Hear that executive session?
Yeah, we did meet, and actually, I think we do have a quick executive session just to give you, the committee, a brief update on that.
We do, yeah, we do, that's, all right, anything under old business? Anything on the new business? I will just say again, I would be remiss if I didn't extend my thanks and gratitude to you, to your teams, to our amazing Clinton Public School teachers for all of the effort and work in the most unconventional of summers to be ready to open schools under conditions that we never expected we would have to. I, I continue to be exceedingly proud of the Clinton Public Schools.
I just, I think I would, if I could just add one thing here, I'd just say, I think our administrative team has worked incredibly hard this summer, and I think that it's been, you know, challenging, but they've been putting in the time and effort, I can see a lot of them are answering people on the chat right now. I also wanted to say again to the CTA, we've been working closely with the CTA, and I do know that they, they did an informal, we've done some meetings, I did a staff meeting last week, they did some union meetings on Thursday, the CTA took a kind of a pull, straw pull, over the weekend to see where the, where the, where the association was in terms of returning to school, and... in terms of returning to school, and I think they had sort of a lower voter turnout than they had hoped, you know, it was an electronic poll, but over 85% of the teachers were basically saying that they, they would return to work, and I think that that's, and that's great. And I do think that, when you talk about, you know, I know one question that came up here in the chat at one point, was, you know, how are we able to open hybrid, schools around us that are opening remote? And I would say, I think one thing is, is our relationship with the union right now, and being able to try to work through some of the problems that I think, you know, might have been bigger sticking points in other, in other districts, so. Just like to commend everyone, I think it's been an incredibly busy summer, but I appreciate all the work everyone's done.
Again, just, you know, the proof is in this, this massive 60-page document, so, thank you. There being nothing else under Chapter 30A, Section 21 of Massachusetts General Law, the open meeting law, the committee will enter into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with instructional assistants, the committee will not reconvene, this requires a roll call vote. Joel Bates, aye.
Deborah Goodsell, aye.
Matt Farakis, aye.
Tina Sapiantis, aye.
Brendan Bailey, aye.
Thank you.